Would everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, can you call the roll? No, you don't need to. We good? Okay. All right. Our first item is presentations for the Southfield A&amp;T Girls Basketball Team. Our presentations will be presented by our Councilwoman, Tanya Morris.
Good evening, everyone. Are there representatives here from the Southfield A&amp;T High School Girls Championship finalists? Can you come on up, please? Well, before I read the resolution, I just want to say that we, the City of Southfield, City Council, are so excited and proud of your accomplishments on your winning record of 24-2. And I'm just going to read this joint resolution in recognition of Southfield A&amp;T 2019 State Championship finalists. Whereas, Southfield A&amp;T High School is a senior high located in Southfield, Michigan, and whereas, Southfield A&amp;T was founded in 2016 and its school mission is to prepare all students for higher learning and the pursuit of a career in order to empower them to become knowledgeable, engaged citizens who contribute to a growing global community. And whereas, Southfield A&amp;T School's motto is S-I-T-T-O, success. Now, how do y'all pronounce that? S-I-T-T-O, success? S-I-T-T-O, success is the only option. And whereas, Southfield A&amp;T 2019 Girls Basketball Team was a Division One State finalist. And whereas, this team exemplified grit, determination, and represented the great city of Southfield with class and finished the season with an impressive record of 24-2 and was led by Coach Michelle Marshall. And whereas, we honor the entire coaching staff, team managers, athletic directors, and principal. Now, therefore be it resolved, we pay special tribute to the 2019 Southfield A&amp;T Girls Basketball roster. Kayla Trammell, Kayana Willis, Soleil Barnes, Janay Cameron, Essence Pickett, Nea Lawson, Cheyenne McEvans, Jasmine Worthy, Riley Robinson, Miari Reeves, Rachel Hall, Alexis Johnson, Ryan Williams, and Dosseny Borum. Be it further resolved that we, the mayor and city council, convey our collective commendation to the Southfield A&amp;T 2019 Girls Basketball Team, coaches and administrators on being state finalists in the Division One Girls Basketball Final. The entire city of Southfield are extremely proud of you. Yes!
Did you want to make a comment? Did anyone want to say something?
Yeah, I'm going to do that after I give them.
Oh, okay.
Congratulations. 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 Coach?
Congratulations.
And then as well.
Coach? Congratulations. If you'd like to have words to say.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Marshall, and I am the head coach of the Girls Basketball Program at Southfield A&amp;T. We would like, on behalf of the Girls Basketball Program, we have several young ladies who are traveling from AAU, and so we're a small numbers today, but we appreciate the young ladies coming out. We really appreciate it. I am an employee of Southfield Public Schools as a teacher, and only district I've ever been in, and so I'm very grateful that Southfield Public Schools and the city of Southfield decided to show honor to these young ladies. They've worked extremely hard. They're great young ladies, they're great students, and they're great student athletes. And so, from our program to the city of Southfield, we are extremely grateful, and we appreciate it, and thank you so much.
I'm going to give you the rest of these, Coach Maxwell. I understand some of your--
And we're going to ask that you come around and shake our hands, all of you ladies.
Coach Maxwell, I'm going to give you the rest of these, and then you guys can give them to the rest of the students. Yeah. Thank you. You guys can walk around. They want to shake your hands. Thank you.
Terry, you can shake their hand, too.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you. Go get it next year.
Four point one! Four point one! Four point two!
Yeah, he's got the Girls Softball Team this year, Macsano.
Oh, wow. We're also honored to have our State Rep Kyra Harris Bolden in the audience. I think you also wanted to do a presentation?
Yes. From the House of Representatives, on behalf of the state of Michigan, we present the Certificate of Achievement for the Southfield A&amp;T Girls varsity basketball team for your achievements. And I would just like to say that Coach Jackson and Coach Maxwell were my teachers when I was in high school, and so this is just a full circle moment, and our Girls varsity basketball team did exceptionally well when I was in high school, and I see that the great work is still being done, and it just fills my heart. So, congratulations, and your futures are bright, and it's so great to see you guys. And I went to high school. Okay, okay. I'm sorry. This is signed by myself, your state representative, as well as State Senator Jeremy Moss. So, congratulations.
All right. Thank you. Congratulations again. Next, we have appointments, which we have none. We have minutes--
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair. I'm sorry. Before Kyra gets out of here. State Rep Bolden?
I just want to say real quickly, I know that you've been involved on the uncapping issue. Our assessor came and spoke about that issue, and I just, I thought you were going to talk about some other stuff that you're working on. I just wanted to get--
Oh, yes.
Get your contact information, because I want to reach out to you about that issue. We talked about it in the economic development meeting.
Yes, yes. So, I can give you an update when I was put on the agenda. I wasn't sure if it was just for a certificate or legislative update or both. So, yes, we are looking into legislation to help with uncapping my information. You can reach me at kyra, K-Y-R-A, bolden, B-O-L-D-E-N, at house.mi.gov.
Okay, very good.
And just a quick update of what we have been doing in Lansing along with that particular issue that I know is a really big issue for this community. One of the bills that I was a sponsor of passed the House, passed through the Judiciary Committee, passed through the House, passed unanimously through the Senate Judiciary Committee and will be making its way to the Senate floor. So, very excited about that. That is a criminal justice reform measure which will allow persons that are incarcerated, deemed medically frail, which are typically our elderly population that are no threat to society, and experience some type of degeneration in their motor functions, as in, they may be in a coma, they may be on dialysis, they may have severe dementia, allows for limited parole under those circumstances. And this is a really, really good public policy measure as people are aging and incarcerated, but also it will save the state a substantial amount of money. So, that is what I have been working on, so we are hoping that it will get to the Senate floor, maybe this week or next week, and it will pass. Also, continuously working on lowering car insurance rates, so I sit on that committee, and so we're putting ideas on the table and solutions about how we can do that. And that is kind of what we're focusing on, is criminal justice reform and making sure we lower our car insurance rates for our residents. So, please feel free to contact me, anybody watching and listening, feel free to contact my office if you have any questions or concerns.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair? I would like to--
One second. We need to--
Kyra, come on up here. Get up here, Walker. These other Southfield kids. Let's go. I have never mentioned, come on, get up here. Yeah. Get yourself up here. Southfield, hi, guys.
Hi. Very nice.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for the update. Always good to see you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution that was given to the Southfield A&amp;T Girls Basketball Team.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Brightwell, for the resolution approval to the Southfield A&amp;T Girls Basketball Team. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Next, we will have the minutes.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve minutes for the committee of the whole meeting, April 8th, 2019, and the regular meeting minutes of April 15th, 2019.
Support. It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum, for the approval of our minutes for the committee of the whole meeting of April 8th and the regular meeting of April 15th. All in favor? Any opposed? Any questions? Okay. Next, we move to the consent agenda.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Mandelbaum?
I'd like to move approval of consent agenda items A through O, with note that for the two, for item G, that we have the two meetings on the 16th at 7:00 and the 30th of May at 6:00 p.m.
Support. It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilwoman Morris, for the approval of consent agenda items A through O, noting the special council meeting schedule. I shouldn't say special, the scheduled two council meetings added. All in favor? Any opposed? Next, we go to our public hearing.
Madam Chair, can I just have a moment? I wanted to thank staff and our city planner for all the work they did in the CIP project. It was, I know, quite in-depth, and if you see all the work that went into it, I want to congratulate them and the administration.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Crowe? Yes?
I'm going to go unfreeze the--
Okay.
Our public hearing tonight is PSLU 19-0002, a zoning ordinance text amendment to amend Article 4 general requirements to add a new section 5.22-3-1, RUDD, Residential Unit Development District, and to amend Article 5 Single Family Residential Section 5.62A to add small event venues as a special land use. These text amendments specifically address adding the eligibility of an overlay district for residential development of various vacant school district properties in the city and allowing for use of residential structures and properties as small event venues, subject to specific conditions. The six sites are located here. Again, they are only adding the eligibility of these for the potential RUDD. And the purpose is to allow for adaptive reuse, to provide attached single-family and multiple-family redevelopment, to provide additional housing options within the city, and to discourage blight and charter schools. These are the former John Grace, Brace Latterly, Eisenhower, McKinley, Leonard, and Northbrook School sites. Eligibility requirements, they have to meet recognizable benefits. There's a minimum size of 3.75 acres of continuous land. We look at the use of public services. They have to be compatible with the future land use plan. Economic impact of the development, provision of usable open space, they have to be under unified control. And the permitted uses include any of the residential land uses, including multiple-family and accessory buildings, including but not limited to rental offices, community buildings, non-commercial golf courses, public libraries, parks, and nature preserves. The density will be determined as it goes through the Planning Commission and City Council, and any regulations that are not specifically addressed as part of the RUDD will fall to the underlying zoning district. There's a provision of 25% open space has to be designated, and the project is to encourage flexibility and creativity in setbacks, density, parking, may be granted provided they will result in a higher quality development than would be possible using conventional As far as the special land use, providing small event venues, maximum building size is 3,000 square feet on the first floor. Site has to have at least one acre minimum land area. Maximum building height is 30 feet. They must be located on a major thoroughfare. Parking shall be required in accordance with parking standards. Outside storage shall be prohibited. The hours of operation are subject to special use conditions. Temporary outdoor activities may be permitted subject to special use conditions. And any new building shall be set back a minimum of 30 feet from all property lines. A six-foot tall residential fence or unpaved masonry wall shall be provided on all sides adjacent to the districts. And then there's some other ancillary requirements. So, that is, in the essence, we're asking the council to approve six eligible overlay sites, to approve the regulations for the residential unit development districts, and to approve adding small event venues as a special land use in certain residential districts. After the public hearing, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Okay. Seeing that this is a public hearing, if there's anyone that would like to speak to PSLU 19-0002, the zoning ordinance text amendment only, please come forward. Please state your name, address, and phone number, and give us your comments.
Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. And residents, thank you so much for still reaching out to me when you need me after over 30 years. I really appreciate your confidence in me. I want to know, have any of you Googled RUD, Residential Unit Development District? There really is no such thing as that. What it's actually called, and I stand to be corrected, is Residential Plan Unit Development. My first question is, are the two of them the same? Now, we've got a subdivision, Lockmore, that has some serious issues with the city of Southfield as it relates to houses that have been built in the subdivision. One of the residents in there obtaining several of the lots and them recognizing the homeowners' association members as the builder. So, now, if that is the case, that in this situation, you have the residents acting as the builder at Lockmore, does this change the dynamics? So, in other words, if the original site plans for this development says that they have to build houses that are 2,000 square feet with this type of setback on this type of lot, does this mean with this development, since you're talking about single-family homes, that it would now apply to Lockmore? Where are we getting these names from? It just appears as if you have members of this organization, this municipality, that wants to put red poles out there to say that they did that, to come up with all these different names that you're putting in the book for zoning. Are we zoning based on stuff that's being created here, or are we zoning based on what's already out there? And then, the next question that I have, this zoning would replace what we've already got on the books. Is that something that you've really looked into, that you want to make that change? Or are you prepared to make that decision and make it really fast tonight? So, I'm going to challenge any of you to tell me, can you find anything that speaks to RUD, Residential Unit Development District, or will you find something that would say R-PUD, Residential Plan Unit Development? And then, if you find it, tell me what it means. Don't just give me the acronym and tell me what the acronym is. Thank you.
Thank you.
But I think you shouldn't vote on this tonight.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to zoning amendment text? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public meeting. Mr. Crowe?
We've provided a resolution for your consideration for adoption of the ordinance, I believe. Talking to Madam Clerk, we would need to introduce ordinance number 1702, and then approve and introduce.
Through the chair, there was a comment made, and I just want to ask--
Sure.
--Mr. Crowe, in reference to the zoning, can you bring some light onto that? Are we zoning, rezoning based on what's going to be built or what's there?
So, the existing, each of the existing sites are in a single-family residential district.
Correct.
Schools and public uses are already permitted in the single-family residential district. But in order to do adaptive reuse of these school sites for possibly multiple-family, another zoning mechanism needs to be put in place, which I'm proposing as the Residential Unit Development District overlay. It's similar to our ODD, it just creates the eligibility and the regulations. Should the property owner decide to move forward, this just provides an additional option for redevelopment. They would have to come through our normal zoning amendment process, Planning Commission public hearing, council public hearing, but it gives us some flexibility over the underlying zoning district regulations that only do allow for schools, single-family uses, and so forth. So, this is giving an extra option for redevelopment of these larger vacant sites from three acres up to almost 20 acres. Under the traditional current zoning, they could only subdivide the lots based on the minimum requirements, and in some cases, maybe only get a dozen single-family homes versus the potential to salvage or adaptive reuse of a historic building or part of a historic building, or to allow new construction to be added to the existing site. So, what we're doing tonight is creating the eligibility on over six vacant school sites, creating the regulations should someone decide to move forward with it in the future. And then, the other part of the amendment is to create an option of a small event venue as a special land use in certain residential districts that meet the requirements.
Does the rezoning also allow for TIF financing or brownfield development?
Well, those, again, those are separate from site plan. The economics, the financing is separate from the actual site plan and the rezoning process, but those are mechanisms to make them economically viable.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Through the chair, Mr. Crowe, there was a question raised about this, the RUD and the naming. Can you speak to that? I have seen, I did look, there are other cities that do call it a residential unit, but then, when you get into the weeds, they change the name.
So, the generic term is Plan Unit Development. We have an overlay development district. It's just an acronym. It's specialized for Southfield. So, since this is a residential Plan Unit Development, I just shortened it to Residential Unit Development District to be consistent with our overlay development district. In some communities, a Plan Unit Development is a two-piece. It has non-residential and residential. But since we went forward with the overlay development district to non-residential, and it's been in practice for many years, this is specific to residential areas, and so I just proposed the term Residential Unit Development. But they're just different ways of saying the same thing, but ours makes us, the acronym more unique to Southfield than it does just adopting what other communities have used.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Fracazi?
You know, to the city planner, Terry, under small event venues, there's D must be located on a major thoroughfare. How does that work when you have only, I think, one Brace Latterly on it? No, there's two. There's two, one on 12 Monroe and one in Brace Latterly would be on the major street.
Right. The small event venues is separate from the residential unit development districts. The small event venue is similar to what we did when we, the McDonald House, we were trying to create an additional option as a bed breakfast. So, we designated the small event venues to only be on major thoroughfares as defined in our master plan and by the city engineer, to keep them from being developed in the interior of a residential subdivision or neighborhood. So, they have to be on a main road just for access purposes, because they tend to create, they're going to create more traffic than what you would do under a single-family development. So, the residential unit development is specific to these large school sites. The small event venue is anywhere a residential district that can meet minimum one acre parcel and be on a major thoroughfare, and then there's some other qualifying requirements.
Yeah. I would be very concerned on those schools that are in an interior residential and somewhere in there that whatever is developed should be of the character of existing, the existing neighborhood.
That's correct.
And I'm very concerned about John Grace. You know, in the Bonnie Acres area, we took down the Sims School. or to allow new construction to be added to the existing site. So what we're doing tonight is creating the eligibility on over six vacant school sites, creating the regulations should someone decide to move forward with it in the future. And then the other part of the amendment is to create an option of a small event venue as a special land use in certain residential districts that meet the requirements.
Does the rezoning also allow for TIF financing or brownfield development?
Well, those, again, those are separate from site plan. The economics, the financing is separate from the actual site plan and the rezoning process. But those are mechanisms to make them economically viable.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Mandelbaum?
Through the chair, Mr. Crowe, there was a question raised about this, the RUD and the naming. Can you, can you speak to that? I have seen, I did look, there are other cities that do call it a residential unit, but then when you get into the weeds, they change the name.
So the generic term is Plan Unit Development. We have an Overlay Development District. It's just an acronym. It's specialized for Southfield. So since this is a residential Plan Unit Development, I just shortened it to Residential Unit Development District to be consistent with our Overlay Development District. In some communities, a Plan Unit Development is a two-piece. It has non-residential and residential. But since we went forward with the Overlay Development District to non-residential, and it's been in practice for many years, this is specific to residential areas. And so I just proposed the term Residential Unit Development. But they're just different ways of saying the same thing. But ours makes us, the acronym more unique to Southfield than it does just adopting what other communities have used.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Fracazi?
Yeah, to the city planner, Terry. Under small event venues, there's D must be located on a major thoroughfare. How does that work when you have only, I think, one bracelet on it? No, there's two. There's two, one on 12 Monroe and one in bracelet would be on the major street.
Right. The small event venues is separate from the Residential Unit Development Districts. The small event venue is similar to what we did when we, the McDonald House, we were trying to create an additional option as a Ben breakfast. So we designated the small event venues to only be on major thoroughfares as defined in our master plan and by the city engineer to keep them from being developed in the interior of a residential subdivision or neighborhood. So they have to be on a main road just for access purposes. Because they tend to create, they're going to create more traffic than what you would do under a single-family development. So the residential unit development is specific to these large school sites. The small event venue is anywhere a residential district that can meet minimum one-acre parcel and be on a major thoroughfare and then there's some other qualifying requirements.
Yeah, I would, I would be very concerned on those schools that are in an interior residential and somewhere in there that whatever is developed should be of the character of existing, the existing neighborhood.
That's correct.
And, and I'm very concerned about John Grace. You know, in the Bonnie Acres area, we took down the Sims School and put a park there. A very, you know, Mr. Fraser was talking about West Side. There aren't enough land for, you know, just being, what do they call it? Parkland?
Right.
And I would like to see that at John Grace stay as a park. And that would increase the value of those homes in that area.
Right, so just-
And we have the same thing in Bonnie Acres, which the homes went up after the Sims School was taken down. And it's just a leisure park now. And I'd like to see the same thing happening at John Grace.
This, if I could, to hopefully assuage some of your concerns, there is a minimum 25% open space that has to be provided. And this does not automatically rezone these parcels. It creates the eligibility. So if there was a realistic development for John Grace, for example, since you pointed that out, they would have to come through the Planning Commission Council process with specific plans. And then you would have the ability to look to make sure that it is in character with the neighborhood. So this is, again, just creating the eligibility and the regulations. Each one of these sites, should there be the proper developer and the will by the owner, they will have to individually come through, through council for final approval with specific plans, with specific densities, with all the bells and whistles that we typically require on our other development districts. This just creates some flexibility to encourage redevelopment. And they could end up being a park. That is a permitted use.
Yeah, but what I'm really concerned about, Terry, is that, is that when you're looking at the expense of taking down one of those schools, they probably have some environmental issues. And to a developer, they look at that per price, per square acre, to the acre. And then they try to develop something that they can make money on.
Right.
And that's what my real concern is, is that they may put more on the piece of land that, to get their return. And all those schools are quite old and I'm sure have environmental problems. To clean these places up today costs quite a bit. We see that at Northland, what it takes to take down a building.
Sure.
And this would be no different.
But to your point-
Those are just my concerns.
Yeah, and they're all valid. And those are all valid concerns. And to your point, that's why we say economic development and value is taken into consideration because, let's say, a single-family developer, it would be cost prohibitive for him to take on a school site, remove the asbestos, move the lead-based paint, demo the site, and then try to build a handful of homes. So there's got to be some incentive to encourage the developer to do those environmental cleanup as part of it. And ultimately, you have the end say on each development. Each one would be unique and different. And you get to say, "That is too dense, Mr. Developer. You have to scale it back." You have that protection built into this process.
I know that people have looked at John Grace already, developers. I don't know why, but I guess somebody put out the word that it's for sale. And that's going to be a highly dense development, from what I heard. And that would be not in the character of the neighborhood at all. And I am looking at it and happened to talk to the developer. And he said, "Well, I can't get the money out if I tear down the building. And I need to have more, more units." And I don't think that ought to be the criteria of what they put on that land.
As I stated during the study sessions, during the master plan process, the school district approached my office and said, "What can we do with these large vacant sites and buildings?" And we talked about possible redevelopment as single-family and multiple families. So this, this is really satisfying. One of the goals and objectives of the master plan is to provide more flexibility to encourage adaptive reuse in a responsible and environmental-sensitive way. That's all we're doing tonight. We're not rezoning them, per se.
I'm just throwing up the flag.
They're all valid points.
Mr. Mandelbaum?
Thank you. Mr. Crowe, another question. So these are currently all former or vacant school lots. If another school lot were to become vacant, would we then want to add-
We could.
-into this development?
We could.
Or just depending on what, what's going on in the economy at that point?
We could. As I stated, if you remember, when we started the Overlay Development District, we started small-
Right.
-with only the city center. And then after we had one or two successful projects, we broadened that to include the DDA. And then it was added again. So we have many of our commercial subareas within the city that are now eligible. And we've had five or six Overlay Development Districts successfully developed. And I'm proposing a slow but cautious approach. Let's start with these sites. We know they're vacant. And if we have some success with them or the economy changes or other properties add up, certainly we could consider other large undeveloped or underdeveloped vacant parcels that are not even school sites. We don't have a lot of them in the city. But I, again, wanted to take a slow and steady approach. And let's test the waters with these sites first. But we certainly can add or amend at any time in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so.
Madam Chair, if there's no other questions, I'd like to make a motion that we approve PSLU 19-0002.
Is there support?
I'll support it.
Okay, so it's moved by Councilman Mandelbaum and supported by Don Fracazi for the approval of PSLU 19-0002. All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I'd also like to make a motion that we introduce ordinance number seventeen oh two.
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Brightwell, for the, did you introduce?
Introduce.
Introduction of ordinance seventeen oh two. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
All right. Moving to our next item, we have the site plan for PSP 19-0002. That's you also, Mr. Crowe?
Yes, thank you. PSP 19-0002 is a site plan review request of Mr. Nick Freund, Freund and Associates on behalf of the owner, Trucklight Company, LLC, for the construction of a 40,000-square-foot headquarters and tech center on property located at 21700 Civic Center Drive, located at the northeast corner of Civic Center Drive and northbound Northwestern Highway Service Drive. Property is approximately five acres, located here on the aerial. The zoning is currently regional center. The existing conditions are that the site is vacant. And this is the former site of Bendix, for those who've been around for a while. This next phase, Mr. Nick Freund, is going to introduce the company, Trucklight, give you some background about their operations, and then we'll get into the specifics of the site plan review. And I'll be happy to answer any questions at that time. This has gone through the Site Plan Review Committee with a favorable recommendation to move forward to tonight.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Nick Freund, and I have a firm, Freund and Associates, at 307 West Sixth Street in Royal Oak, Michigan. And as Terry pointed out, we're excited to be part of this property and this process. Trucklight came to us to do the pre-construction and participated in the due diligence for their building here. As Terry pointed out, the specifics of 40,000 square feet, we believe that's growing a little bit on the interior by taking advantage of some high base space. But the predominant features of the building will be office and demonstration for their products. So as I mentioned, we've grown a little bit from the 40,000 initially presented at the Planning Commission. However, it's all within the original footprint as originally delineated through this process. There will be a demonstration space. That is not to be confused with a garage or an area where there can be mechanics working. That is, the only thing that will be coming through there is trucks and vehicles to demonstrate the products that are manufactured by Trucklight. Those trucks could be full semi-trailers, 55-foot-long trailers, which would pull into the building and pull out. We were very clear about the fact that these trucks will not be after hours. And they will be one or two a month as opposed to a distribution facility where they would be coming more frequently. The building capacity is up to 150 employees, but the initial headcount is much smaller than that. Trucklight will be coming from their current headquarters near the Buffalo area in New York. And initially, we're just going to be moving over the small executive leadership that is currently in Auburn Hills, moving into the space and growing to as large as we can at this point. That's the good news. Hours of operation will be business hours, eight to five, with no outside hours. Why the city of Southfield? You know, there's a couple bullet points here, and they speak for themselves. I'm fond of saying that, you know, Trucklight is really excited to be part of this technology corridor right in the city center. We feel like the connectivity to LTU and all the corporate offices and the corporate space right there in the Civic Center Drive is excellent, something we're very excited about. And also, you know, again, with mention to Lawrence Tech University, we're excited about drawing from that young talent pool and keeping them working in Southfield. So a little bit about Trucklight, established in 1955. They do 500 million in revenue. They have approximately 3,000 employees worldwide. They're a national company, or excuse me, multinational company. And they have one over a million square feet of manufacturing space globally. So Trucklight, their products are commercial lighting components and some affiliated products that go around lighting as well as, including wire harnesses and telematics, which is vehicle tracking and vehicle trafficking hardware. Regarding their customer base, this, as I mentioned, it's mostly commercial. And it covers automotive, truck, trailer, body and bus, off-road, military, recreational vehicles, and commercial aftermarket. So again, the idea is that this is their headquartered facility with a demonstration space for that customer base, that that customer or that OEM would be able to pull in to that facility and showcase the Trucklight products on that vehicle. Here is a slide regarding the ownership of Trucklight. It's Koch Industries, BDT Capital, and Penske Corp. You know, we're closely affiliated with the Penske organization. I'm happy to say that they've been very supportive of this project. They've provided a lot of resources to us in terms of their real estate department, their construction management department, and some resources that they have with their national branding. Mentioned the global facilities. They are truly international company. And as you'll see, we put a big star right on Southfield. That's going to be the, that will be the headquarters. Excited to be in town and lots of, lots, it went into that, as I'm told. Obviously, leaving New York State was a hard thing for them. And the proximity to the talent pool in Southfield and southeast Michigan in large is really exciting to them and their clients. Here's a picture of the building facade. It's really three main components, masonry, metal panel, glass. Here is a rendering of the, I guess, that would be the south-facing side of the building on Civic Center Drive. Really, a lot went into this to really bring out a lot of glass and a lot of contemporary features without making it overly contemporary, to make it feel suitable and appropriate to this running space and buildings.
If I could add, through the chair, that elevation's about 40 feet. So it is the equivalent of a four-story building, but it's-
Yeah, two stories.
You have the larger interior spaces.
Correct.
But as far as the elevation, that's 40 feet high.
Here are a couple shots from further field. You can see that we're really trying to utilize that corner as well. A lot, a lot of time and thought went into that corner with Terry's department and integrating with the city walk path that exists to the left. That area shown is kind of like darker gray or asphalt. That is existing and will connect to the Southfield walk spaces. Here are the elevations that Terry mentioned. It's a little blurred, but additional renderings can be provided. Obviously, you know, as you saw in the earlier slide, you know, the site is mostly vacant and without trees. So we will be bringing in additional trees and adhering to all the landscaping standards. This is the north or the back-facing side of the building. This is the side where it's going to be predominantly for the demonstration space. The first floor with the unified masonry is where the demonstration facility would be. Here's an aerial showing the trees that we'd be incorporating. The area to the bottom left has been referred to as the orchard in order to get our tree count. We just exceed the parking requirements for a building of this size. There's a site plan.
Through the chair, was that a body of water?
Yeah, yeah, so it's the left side. That is the required detention basin. That's required to make sure that we manage our site rainwater and surface drainage.
So why don't we just end on this one?
Sure.
Okay.
If the council has any specific questions about the site plan, this did go before the Site Plan Committee?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Fracazi?
The Site Plan Committee met Mr. Brightwell and Mr. Mandelbaum. We met with that. We had unanimous approval for this. They changed that back, the back driveway, haven't you?
Yeah, we did, thank you.
From what was before us.
That's right, that's right. We fleshed it up.
They made it a lot more green. It's a beautiful site, a beautiful building. And principals have worked in Southfield in the past. It's going to be a good project.
Thank you. Mr. Brightwell?
Yeah, one of the things I like about it is that it is a demonstration facility. There would be no manufacturing. It's a demonstration facility. And they will bring in their vehicles and they will bring their customers in to take a look at their product from a demonstration showroom standpoint, somewhere along those lines.
Any other questions, Council?
Madam Chair, if you're ready, I'll make the motion. We approve the site plan.
Support?
It's been moved by Councilman Fracazi, supported by Mr. Brightwell, for the approval of PSP 19-0002. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Okay.
Just a little commentary on that. One of the principals is Roger Penske in this deal. And he started way back when with a Penske Chevrolet on Telegraph Road. So he's been here years ago, started a dealership and came back to his home to do this beautiful development.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you. Next, we have communication. But before we start, there's a little bit that I need to read. The Southfield City Council has established the following rules and procedure for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon- No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member or other elected officials that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use threatening, abusive language, or hate speech when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace by disturbing and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city council, and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. Thank you. Our first request for recognition is Pamela Gerald.
I was going to talk about something else, but since you read that statement, I'm going to address you reading that statement.
Okay.
The previous president that sat in that seat, and he was a guy, read that same old statement over and over and over and over and over and over again. All of you sat up there and listened to a resident call a city official all kinds of One, two, three, four, five, and two that are missing. Never stopped him, never said a word. And that same president used to talk about potato chips, pretzels, candy, residents drinking water. It really makes all of you look ridiculous to read that statement, and you allowed that type of behavior for an entire year when he sat in that seat. So what are you reading it for? You have not enforced anything, neither did the person reading that statement prior to you reading it and prior to Lloyd Cruz. You need to stop with this selective enforcement, and you need to stop with the selective enforcement gearing it to one and not the other. I'm beginning to think there's some kind of misogyny going on here, because it seems to be everything geared towards the females that come up here and speak and not the guys. Now, I think I've said enough about that. I'll go back to what I was going to say. You know, we purchased Northland December seventeenth of twenty fifteen. We were told by the city administrator that that's prime property, and at one time it was. We would have developers standing in line trying to get Northland and to buy Northland. Well, we're doing what they seem to be doing in the city of Detroit, and that's doing dereliction by design. You know, we bought the property, we let it sit, and it's still sitting, we're shifting dirt, moving dirt, crushing concrete while the property values in that area are going down. We've even acquired the other units on that piece of property, so it's more than the hundred and fourteen acres. But what are we doing with it? You guys are going to sit back and wait, and to a developer like Ark and Jonah comes and asks you, can I do this property and get all these tax abatements for free? And you guys are going to allow it because you've allowed that property to be a white elephant to the taxpayers and to this city. Shame on all of you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Gerald Mullin.
Gerard, and you know him.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Gerard Mullin, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, Post Office Box One-Fifty-Five, Southfield, Michigan, four-eight-zero-three-seven. Madam Chair, tonight, I would like to talk about Section four-point-three. Section four-point-three in the Southfield City Charter. Four-point-three is entitled Regular Meetings, and I quote from Section four-point-three. The council shall hold at least two regular meetings each month, unquote. Sad to say, this council can't even fulfill this simple charter requirement. For example, take the month of May in the year twenty eighteen, there were two scheduled meetings, two regular scheduled meetings that month, two, May fourteenth and May twenty-first. The May fourteenth meeting went fine, but the May twenty-first meeting, it didn't have a quorum, so the meeting was canceled. Under the leadership of then-council president Dan Brightwell, council then scheduled a make-up meeting, a special meeting, to take place on Tuesday, May twenty-ninth. But a special meeting is not a regular meeting. Why schedule a special meeting and not a regular meeting? Well, there was no choice in this matter, because according to the charter, council can only schedule a regular meeting during an actual meeting. So council had to schedule a special meeting first in order to schedule a regular meeting. Unfortunately, council president Brightwell dropped the ball by not scheduling an additional regular meeting during the special meeting for the month of May, and thus the screw-up. If you folks can't do a simple, routine administrative detail mandated by this charter, like properly scheduling a regular council meeting, then how do you folks ever, ever expect to do something really big, big and difficult, like bailing out of Northland and doing it correctly? The answer is this: you can't. The solution is this: we need a change this November, November the fifth, twenty nineteen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we recognize Sonia Simpson Gardner. She's not here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Stacy Jackson, two-one-six-eight-five Rougewood Drive, Southfield, Michigan, four-eight-zero-three-three. I'd like to read something today, as I was approached by a beautiful senior who wanted me to say thank you to my stronger half on behalf of his organization, All Race and Life Matter, and the statement of his organization, which goes as follows. When all faith-based organizations, human rights organizations, media outlets, corporations, unions, and small businesses come together, outspoken people of all races with the same common goal to achieve the American dream, we cannot achieve these goals without good judges, lawyers, prosecutors, law enforcement, and our elected officials working with us. All organizations should stand together to show real diversity in order to bring equal justice and equal rights, to show that it is a human right to end hunger, to have affordable housing, a right to an education without bullying or gun violence in the schools, to protect the disabled and handicapped by ensuring reasonable accommodations, to protect our seniors and veterans, to protect the rights of our LGBTQ community from bullying, harassment, and intimidation in our schools, workplace, and communities, protecting our environment, affordable and clean drinking water, affordable health care, good union-paying jobs with benefits without worrying about bullying, sexual harassment, or gun violence in the workplace, to stop illegal deportation, stop police harassment and brutality, the right to freedom of speech, and the right to assemble to assure these human rights for all people. It sounds like a mouthful, but the man who wrote these stands by the credence of them. In the end, he wants everyone to belong. My experience here is that this city's neglect and selective code enforcement makes it where residents don't belong. I am hoping that this council truly publicly makes a statement to the residents, as thousands are at risk of losing their homes for this septic tank issue. When you are silent, it makes us feel that we do not belong. Today, we recognize young teenage girls. As their elder, I understand the feeling of standing in glass slippers trying to crack through glass ceilings. My home should not be one of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we recognize Keith Harris.
How you guys doing today? I'm with All Race and Life Matter, P O Box Twenty-seven-sixty-nine, Southfield, Michigan, four-eight-zero-three-seven. First thing I'd like to say is, we lost some people at one of our synagogues, and that's something we have to pray for. And we also lost our judge, Damon Keith. Great man. Everything she read is a part of our organization, and Judge Damon Keith meant those things. I had the opportunity of meeting him years ago, and he helped me with a situation, and I took a big liking to him. But if Judge Damon Keith was standing here today, he would look at this mural that was bought with Northland Mall, and it's basically stored away in a trashy position, the Motown mural, in fear of doing damage. While we're saving art and putting up ridiculous things that don't reflect African-American people like red poles, this is an insult. This is just a racial insult to know that faces like these are in danger, stored away, where people can't see them, where we pimp Dr. King once a year. I say the word pimp. Why ain't we got a big portrait of Dr. King, but we got a picture of Old McDonald's Farm when we come in? This is ridiculous. We need to do better by showing faces of black people in this city. We need our own African-American art board. We need to start meeting more as African-Americans. And it don't mean to just, we're all about African-Americans. I met with African-American people earlier, and we were talking about the police chief, and sixty percent of them said they want to keep the police chief we got. It's not all about black or white, it's what's best for the residents. We think we got somebody who knows the city, beginning to know us as individuals. We don't want to change that. We got a lot of work to do in this city on race. You know, I don't hold anger in my heart. You know, I could be mad at our prosecutor forever, but instead, I want to work with her. I want to work with each and every one of you. We got to do better. We got to put the residents first, not based on race, but do just better by just the people or the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll recognize Mr. Harold Hill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Council, my name is Harold Hill, two-two-three-hundred Seminole Street, Southfield, Michigan, and I've been coming to these chambers for quite a while now, and so I just wanted to speak out about something that's been going on for at least two years, and it's the issue with the septic tanks. I know we've had two people, Stacy and Keith, have been talking about this issue for quite some while, and I'm hoping, I'm hoping that, because that's an important issue, if it can cause someone to lose their homes because of overtaxation, that's not the way Southfield operates. I'm hoping that it's not a diversity issue. I think that Southfield is a very diverse city, and I'm proud of my city. I've been here for twenty-nine years, and so I would like to see if there's any way that they mentioned, that there's some way that they could possibly come up with items that will lower the cost, if there's some new engineering tool that Keith mentioned earlier. If they can come up with that, I would be happy to dive in and put my money where my mouth is and help try to develop that issue to kind of lower costs for our city, because I think the city residents need it, and they shouldn't lose their homes because of it. So I just wanted to say, my heart goes out to them. For anybody that has a septic tank, hopefully they will come up with lower rates for them. I noticed that they said that you can also repair your septic system now from two thousand seventeen, but that's a long time for the same issue to be on the books, so hopefully we can come up with a solution for that. Thank you. And since I have a little bit of time left, I do have to commend the Department of Public Works. I noticed it rained a lot this weekend, and one of my neighbors said, oh, my basement is flooding. And I made a suggestion that they call Water and Sewage, Public Works. And within six hours, they were there. I called them yesterday, they were there this morning when I passed by, so I got to commend them and say, hey, hopefully they can, they fixed the problem, but at least they were trying, so I appreciate that. Have a good one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll recognize Ms. Wilder Urson. She's not here.
Greg Keeler, twenty-five-one-seven-zero, Circle Drive, Southfield, Michigan. I'm coming to ask the question, why does this council pass bonds, ordnance, that it does not plan to follow? You pass the bond saying we will put in sewer lines, but somehow, when it came to my street, you decided, no, we're not going to put in a sewer line. And to Councilman Morris, when you asked the question, had anybody spoke to me or reached out to me, problem is, I know history, and the history says that this was supposed to be sewer lines, not a septic tank, not a community septic tank. And if you see all these changes in here that was done to this ordinance or bond, that was because we were arguing about it and saying it was messed up continuously. And each time someone speaks to me, first question I ask them, how come there isn't a sewer line there? And you just had a thing where you were going to put some, a new planning in here, and you talked about putting it in there and some of the problems it would have and issues it would have. Well, ours was changed from residential only to accommodate for Lawrence Tech having a dorm put on our property. That was strictly residential. That wasn't residential plus. We tore down some homes, we tore down some wood areas for that dormitory put there, but we did not put in the sewer line. How come? If you are looking at moving forward, moving forward, the vision plan would have been a sewer line put in with that. But we have no vision for Circle Drive. We had, two weeks ago, y'all were talking about repairing and replacing sewer and water lines, but where have y'all talked about putting in a sewer line for Circle Drive? You have budget meetings and plan meetings and everything else for the last twenty, thirty years? But is there any budget or plan in anything that you do that has Circle Drive being upgraded and not downgraded? Or kept the same? Why can't we move forward with the city? Why are we stuck behind? Why has our residential area been changed just for Lawrence Tech, but not for our Why has our residential area been changed just for Lawrence Tech, but not for us? Why haven't we got an upgrade? And if you want to see that this council does have a problem with it, restrict our whole area to just being single-family residential, and see what happens. And so, and if you pay attention, I'm talking about, each time I come, sewers. You being misdirected every time you hear a city employee talk, 'cause they're talking to you about septics.
Okay.
Pay attention to that.
Thank you, Mr. Keeler. Next, we recognize Toby Rhodes. Okay, I don't see him, so communications is now over. Counsel, we have one expense report.
No, I just had an announcement to make prior to the expense report approval, but on Saturday, May 7th, the Oakland County One-Stop Shop Business Center is hoping, is hosting a workshop, starting a business. That event is being held from 9:00 to 11:30 a.m. at the Michigan Works Office in Southfield at 21415 Civic Center Drive, Suite 116. You can register online, and for anybody that's interested in becoming an entrepreneur, you'll receive a lot of valuable information there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Mandelbaum.
I'd like to move approval of the travel expense report for Councilman Brightwell.
Support. It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilwoman Morris, for the approval of the travel expense for Dan Brightwell. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Counsel, is there anything else? Mr. Mandelbaum.
Just a couple announcements. This Saturday, Parks and Rec is starting their, I guess, spring/summer season, and this Saturday, from 10:00 to 11:30, they're having a tennis free-for-all at the Civic Center Park Tennis Courts over here, and you'll have a free 90-minute tennis clinic. Please register in advance so they know how many people to expect. Again, that's on a Saturday from 10:00 to 11:30. Earlier in the day, they also have a fishing derby from 8:00 to 12:00. Grab your fishing poles and your worms. At the Carpenter Lake Nature Preserve, 10 Mile Road and Inkster, it's a beautiful park, they will have a fishing derby. They, they bring extra fish in just to make it more exciting. And again, that's this Saturday from 8:00 until 12:00. I'd also like to ask our community, we're always looking for volunteers on our different boards and commissions. We currently have a few vacancies or will have a few vacancies on our zoning board of appeals, and we are looking for applicants. The time requirement is one to two meetings per month on Tuesday evenings. If you're interested, please contact the clerk's office for an application, or you can look for an application on the city's website. And last, certainly not least, this Wednesday evening starts the beginning, or is Holocaust Remembrance Day, and the Southfield Library is having a program to observe Holocaust Remembrance Day with a Southfield resident Holocaust survivor who will be speaking about her time during World War II. And I won't go through her bio and everything else, but I will say that the, her story is the Anne Frank story with a happy ending. She was basically hidden throughout the war after escaping Germany, hid in someone's house in Amsterdam in the Netherlands, and has lived in Southfield for many years. So she will be speaking this Wednesday at 6:30 p.m. at the Southfield Library Meeting Room. I encourage everyone to attend. That's it for me. Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you. Mr. Frickazi? Oh, I thought you said you had something. Mr. Brightwell?
Yeah, I just want to clarify something. Last week, when we had the, we, the presentation on the third annual photo contest, I made mention that you can submit pictures that you're taking on your phone, and that was confirmed. I attended the last two award ceremonies, and talking to the Community Relations Director, it did indicate that we have mentioned that you can take pictures on your phone and submit those. If those are readily transferable, they will be accepted. And it's also listed, like the third bullet point in the criteria for submission, that phone pictures are also taken. And I did bring up the fact that this is a community event, and a lot of our residents obviously don't have 30 millimeter cameras, but they have telephones. So I spread the word again that we would like for everyone to take whatever pictures you want, anything that you have, and that if it's submitted and is regularly, easily transferable, it will be used. So I wanted to clarify that because there was some confusion last time we met, that you could not submit pictures that were taken with your smartphone. So, thank you.
And I just wanted to recognize Cable 15's Chris Campbell, who was named as co-host for the Jazz series at the Aretha Franklin Theater for the summer. We have some outstanding employees here in Southfield, and they are very, very talented in so many areas. So I'd just like to recognize him. And if you have time on Wednesday evenings, go out and take a look and listen. And the, for those who may not know, the Aretha Franklin Amphitheater is the old Shane Park Theater. So congratulations to Chris for being the co-host for this summer series.
Is it free?
Since the mayor's not here, city administrator?
Yes. Madam Chairperson, as we discussed earlier tonight, I am requesting authorization to apply to the Oakland County 2019 Local Road Improvement Matching Fund Pilot Program. I handed out earlier a resolution, we're requesting authority to submit an application in the amount of $167,270 for the 2019 Local Improvement Matching Fund Pilot Program for the Lockdale Street and Case Avenue Road Reconstruction Projects. This was part of a project that we started in 2018, at which time we received $172,588 in 2018. So I'm asking council to adopt the resolution attached.
Okay. Counsel?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution as stated by the city administrator.
Support.
There's been motion by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilwoman Morris, for the approval of the, what is that, ordinance?
No, just a resolution.
The resolution that was just mentioned.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I have no other items. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Attorney?
Thank you, we have no items.
Thank you. City Clerk? Treasurer was here. Okay, planner, accessory. Seeing that we have no other business, I say this meeting is adjourned.